...years ago when we were out here and took the ground for the park and we were going to redevelop this park out here and we promised at that time that it would be a class park that you would see here and so we're going to, I want you to hold our feet to the fire and say, "You told us it would be a usable park and that's what we would like to do." So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the interim city manager, Jason Polson, and let him begin the meeting and introduce the speakers.
Okay, so council member Dan Dooley, can we do the pledge of allegiance and moment assignments?
Yes. First flag. We'll stand for pledge of allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, if you'll join me in a moment of silence.
At this time, we'd like to excuse council member Brad Hilton and Carl Newman. They've had some other stuff come up, so we'll excuse them. And I guess at this time, if we can, mayor and council members, we'll just go into the stand in the audience and we'll turn the time over to Travis Taff after a brief interview.
Good idea.
So everybody, welcome to the George Wallen North Park Design of our Playground. We wanted you guys to kind of help us with this design of the playground. My name is Jason Polson and right now, I'm the interim city manager for Roy City. So everybody, welcome. We're really excited tonight. We have three really awesome options for you and I know a lot of you are going to like the water park or the splash pad that will accompany each of the three options and I know that was a huge topic as I sat here with you guys a few years ago. What is the purpose today's meeting? Well, today's meeting and the purpose is, is we're trying to build you guys a destination type park that other people in other communities will come to our park, those from outside of communities will hear about it and will come to it and that's the whole reason why we're here is we're trying to build a destination park that will be really good for you guys. I know we met three years ago on the design and I know it's been a little slow, but there's been a lot that's had to happen. We've had to do a lot of the infrastructure, we've worked new sewer lines, we've got new water lines, curb gutter, parking lot, there's just a lot that's gone into it, kind of like building a house, it seems like it takes forever to get going, but once you finally get that infrastructure in place, then you start seeing everything go up really quick and that's what's about to happen here is you're about to see a park go boom overnight and have everything start to develop. So right now, we've got the landscaping and the sprinklers under contract, we've already done the bids, we've got the contractor who's awarded the bid, so as soon as we get this final little piece on the playground, man, you'll see that playground up in about eight weeks, so we're about ready to get started. Remember, this meeting is about George Wallen North Park's playground, let's try to keep it the George Wallen North Park playground. If you have any other issues or concerns or comments, you're more than welcome to come to our council meeting this Tuesday and share a couple of comments for it. So without further ado, let me introduce Travis Flint. You guys probably know Travis, our Parks and Rec director for the presentation, so I'll turn the page to Travis. Thank you.
Mike Jason said, "My name is Travis Flint, I'm the Roy City Parks and Recreation Director." First off, I'd like to thank North Park Elementary. Principal Reese and his staff are providing us this great place to hold this meeting. The city takes great pride in our relationship with the school district. We work hand in hand to try to improve this town and community. That wasn't bad. And what we plan on doing tonight, what the objective for tonight is, I'm going to spend a little time talking about where we're at, where we've been, and where we're going with the design of the park. I'd like to give you a pretty concrete timeline and then I'm going to turn the time over to a gentleman by the name of Taff Deegan with Big T Recreation. I'll introduce him a little bit more as we go. This right here, and my laser pointer doesn't work, so I'll probably stand up here and point a little bit. This is probably pretty similar to the design you did see three or four years ago with some differences, with some things that are different and we'll talk about that a little bit more at the end of the presentation. We have kind of effectively broke this section down into two areas, a phase one and a phase two, so to speak, okay? And phase one, I want you to think almost from this parking lot south, okay? That would be phase one from this line south. Phase two would be from this line north. It's a design that has a lot of things. What's been accomplished so far? What have we got? Because I get it, I understand, you know, the perception that things aren't being accomplished at a fast enough level and I like Jason's house analogy, we're building a strong foundation. We're doing a lot of things now that we're not going to have to go back and do later because we tried to plan and discuss and work our way through a little bit and we'll talk more about that here in a few minutes. But some of the things we've accomplished, the demolition of the school and the playground, as Jason mentioned, culinary water improvements, sewer line improvements, underground utilities, these things, frankly speaking, the culinary sewer and underground utilities, a lot of them lie underneath the park. They're for your neighborhoods, you know, they're going to improve water flow, they're going to improve sewer issues so we don't have problems. But it was important we had to do them because we had access points through the park, stormwater compliance, the construction of the north restroom storage facility, east restroom storage facility, the grading of football fields, central parking lot, parking lot poles, removal of old sidewalk, awarding a sprinkler bid and what isn't on there is we're about 85% done with the concrete work too. You know, we're about 85% done with that prospect as well. Here's kind of some pictures. As you can see, here's parking lot areas, here's, there's our restroom areas, playground, overall parking structure, we have a lot more cement going through there now. This week, just put a cement order around the tennis courts. We have our north restroom right there. Part of the reason we have done a little bit different in spreading out our restrooms, we had a town survey and some of you may have been a part of it, some of you might not have been. And one of the things was restroom's ability to move around or people's ability to use the restroom without having to walk the whole other end of the park. So we added some smaller ones throughout the park randomly, I don't want to say randomly, but throughout the park, so people don't have to walk from one end to the other. If you're watching football, you don't have to walk the whole other end of the park to use the restroom. Some more areas, we're going to talk about that one here in a bit. We've got a parking lot, stamped concrete areas. This is kind of the area of the playground and it is cemented, you know, I want you to understand there is cement orders and things around that for our water areas and for our playground areas up top. It is under a cement order now. We recently bought a loan to take pictures and we had some issues with the FAA, believe it or not. They wouldn't let us come out this week to review some pictures. I'm not sure why, but they wouldn't allow us to do that. We do have some cement work that has to be done in this area right here, these approach ways and things like that along in there, but that's all coming. The company's currently here right now. Star Brothers is here right now, corn cement, they did it today. Our objective is to be done with phase one by the end of this calendar year, you know, and we've had some really good things take place over the last few days and I'll go through them a little bit with you right now. Finished site grading, that big part of it's done, you know, and there's some fine grading still left to be done. We want to splatter plain surfaces for our fields and for people to walk on and things like that, but the big heavy lifting of the grading has been done. Topsoil seeding, contractor's been awarded. As a matter of fact, we had a pre-construction meeting this morning with New Age Landscaping. New Age Landscaping, we're fortunate to work with them. We've done other jobs with them in the past and I couldn't have been happier that they did it on this process. One of the big concerns and issues we talked with them about was dust control, cleaning up their area, making sure the road's clean at the end of every day, making sure things are watered down to try to prevent dust and I know that's going to concern an issue, but try to prevent that so it's not a problem along the road and along the park. Concrete curb gutter, we're 95% completed with that for phase one. Concrete sidewalks done, stamped concrete done, finished storm drains and hedge basins done, inlet and outlet structures done. Football fields, that's a fancy way, sprinkling system saw, contractor's awarded with that today. Playground water area, that's what we're going to talk about a lot tonight, you know, frankly speaking, we wanted to get your input on a lot of that stuff. You know, that's why we're ultimately working here because we wanted to get your guys' input on things. You know, we've been able to stand it around and pick what we thought was best, but it was important for us to get your voice and to hear what you guys have to say. Restroom concession building, these pump houses, that would go along with the playground area, pavilion goes along with the playground area. And lastly, the moving of the George Wallen Monument. You know, I lived in the room my whole life, I still live in the room and George Wallen's a name that I've known for a long time and I probably didn't know as much as I should, frankly speaking. And through this process in the park and us doing some studying or me doing some studying about George Wallen, what a tremendous individual, one man who dedicated his life for service, for serving others and it has been attributed that this park been named after him. As far as the monument goes, we, Roy City works with a company called Wasatch Civil and Wasatch Civil's, you know, they're big in helping us with our designs, they're big in helping us with the bid processes and getting companies. And when I talked to them about making sure we get that monument moved and secured, they were very fortunate in that they put a young man in charge by the name of Jory Wallen on the project and that last name's not coincidence, it's George's grandson. And so Wasatch Civil has Jory Wallen, George's grandson, he's tasked with making sure the monument gets moved, making sure it gets in storage and that will be a part of us re-putting it back in in its rightful place. And frankly speaking, we're planning on holding a re-dedication ceremony for it, you know, we think that's important to teach the younger generations about this great man and his sacrifices, so that'll be coming soon. But all these things, all these things that we talked about represent phase one of this park. And, you know, like Jason said, the nurse, I'm frustrated, I agree with you, I wish it was done faster. I recently had, two years ago, I had another child and I want to bring my child up here to park. You know, I just feel that young road. The reality of it is this in a lot of aspects. The economy, you know, it's great, it's outstanding and right now, there's more work than there is bought and licensed contractors. And just as one quick example, I've mentioned a couple of times throughout the day that we've awarded our contract for our landscaping. In 2008, we were doing a similar project in Emma Russell Park and we had a similar sized park, a little bigger park and we needed to do similar things. We needed to do irrigation, we needed to do final, we needed to do final grading, we needed to do hydroseeds and the things like that to get grass. And at that time, 2008, we had 17 companies bid on the project. Our process, and it's important, you know, our process on our bids has not changed, you know, it's the same way we require sealed bids, we require them to can get a spec book so they build it the way we want. We had 17 companies apply or bid on doing that job in this process, in this process of the one we're doing right now with New Age. After the first week of it being advertised, we had to go through a proper process of going and doing our bidding, but after the first week, been in newspaper two times, we didn't have one person come get a spec book. And this is a pretty ideal job for big time landscaping companies, you know, it's a big park, it's a customer who's guaranteed to pay and we can't move, we can't shut the doors and move and we didn't have a person to get a spec book. So we got on the phone and called five landscape divisions that we've worked with in the past and asked them and somebody begged them to come fight and put in for this job. Three of them came and picked up spec books. Of that, three came and picked up spec books. Of that group of three, one submitted a bid. One. And where we feel fortunate is, it's a company we've worked with, it's the same company that did Emma Russell Park. They're really good for my staff to work with as far as getting a system in place that we want. But the reason I tell you this story isn't to take you up your time, it's to try and explain parts of the delays, you know, and parts of the reason this is taking a little bit longer than any of us want and frankly speaking, than any of us want. Another quick example of that, the parking lot was completed last year. Advanced Kaden did the parking lot, great company, we worked with them a ton, we continue to work with them. They could tell you right now, if they were in this room, the parking lot probably took them five times longer than it normally would because they're spread out all over the place, you know, and I'm just trying to help you guys understand part of the delays, you know, it's part of the delays. The good news, the good news, I don't want to doom and gloom this, the good news is now everything in phase one, everything that's left in phase one that we have here that hasn't been done, the site grading, the finishing and the curb in contract, topsoil seeding, sprinkling systems, football fields, playground areas, restrooms, pavilion, George Wallen Monument, they're under contract to be done ASAP. And that's a good thing, you know, I couldn't have been happier to have that pre-construction meeting so I could look you guys in the eye and tell you that, that those things are now moving in the right direction. We expect, based on our pre-construction meeting with New Age, they expect to be mobilized and start working within the next 10 days. That is the plan for them to start working in the next 10 days. I'm going to let Taff speak a little bit more from the playground water area and the timeframe there. Couple more things I want to spend a little time talking about, phase two. And our city council has been very adamant in directing me that phase two will be completed next year, so we're real optimistic, we're done with this park in two years. What we currently have, that original picture we looked at, you know, we have asphalt roadway, asphalt parking lot, light poles, storage building, restrooms, shrubs and trees, ball field amenities, ball field leachers, and ball field lights. As most of you know, the city recently sold a part of the old park to American First Recreation. You know, it was a very important part of this process because it allowed us to finance and to finish this park, frankly speaking. And they've been so far extremely good neighbors, we're having a partnership, a partnership with them in the parking lot and doing some things like that. They didn't buy the whole piece though, they didn't buy the whole piece, they bought about six of the 12 acres. And the city council has decided that it's important for us to take those other six acres and put them into the designing of the park, you know, and that's great, we're all looking for good quality green space. I'm about to show you another picture. And this picture here, this is more of a conceptual picture right now, okay? If we're to go back to the first one, what we had here was a tennis court, we had three tee ball fields, we had a much bigger parking structure over in this area and that's changed a little bit. Some of this is, to be brutally honest with you and in full transparency, has not been discussed with the council, but I wanted to show you kind of some possibilities. And so here's these possibilities. Like I mentioned, we shortened up this area a little bit with parking, parking asphalt, our ability to use this area over here, make this so we didn't need this as much, okay? Right here is six pickleball courts. And, you know, I'm a late convert, but people seem to love the game and they like to play and they like to be a part of it. We recently built four courts down at Emma Russell Park and it's very rare that they're not consistently all being used. We added, we kept our two tee ball fields in this area and this area and we added two bigger baseball, softball, multi-purpose fields over here in this area. These fields are pretty critical now from the regulations perspective and programming. You know, we run programs through my department, baseball, football, softball, all of tee ball, coach pitch, machine pitch, all those things. And it's important for us that we can run our programs and this is where we do so, you know, this is where we do so. The plan is we proceed to ramp, ramp, put lights on these two fields, these two will not be lit up, okay? Those two will not be lit up, but the two over here would. Once again, this is very conceptual, you know, this top part's very conceptual, this bottom part of phase one, that's not even in the designing phase anymore, that's in the construction phase, okay? That top part is a little bit up for designing and the council and I and Jason will have conversations about them and what's best and right longer and different, what's financially feasible, you know, because we do have a budget and restraints that we need to work within. But now I just want to go through, the only other slides I have are a few other pictures of kind of what it would look like and I wanted you to go to this one, just to kind of, I've had a few questions asked and where things going, so I want to kind of blow something up a little bit.
Travis, can you go back to the one slide before? There's a few comments about the walking trail, will you show them?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we've heard from some people who have discussed the walking trail, you know, walking trails are, we take great pride in having walking trails around our parks. The current, the current, let me, it might make, the current walking trail right now would go along here, goes along up here, into this area, back into here and kind of makes a loop, okay? The way that the phases are right now, we're going to be able to keep the existing walking trail around here. We've had conversations with the contractor of this property to grant us a piece, to grant us a piece of asphalt right along this fence line, okay, to tie back into the old existing trail system, which will allow you guys, at least for the next foreseeable future, to continue walking on that. And once the park is fully constructed, there is a walking trail the entire length of the park, you know, and once it is completely done, there is a walking trail that will go around the length of the entire park. But because we have heard some concerns and questions about the old walking trail, everything now is currently still in place until we got fenced off, right? And there we talked about, and like I said, we talked with Banks Kaden, ironically I bring them up again, but they're the ones who got the bid at the American First about running that stretch right there to be able to continue the walking trail. This is kind of making a little bit more detail and things like that of what's to come in this space, okay? Here's our water area, here's our kind of bathroom area, storage area right here. Here in this stretch is kind of playground with pavilion in here. What we've talked about, I've got a friend in the audience who's helped me and had some great ideas with gazebos and things like that that, you know, we can play around with too because I love the idea. But as I turn the time over to Taff, when I went to Taff, we had a couple of things that were important and I'll let him go over that one again. But it was important for us, that we want to build a unique park, we want George Wallen North Park to be different than every park. We want people to come and we want people to be in awe of certain things, to want to come back and that's been our objective the whole time, you know, our objective through this whole process is to provide something and I refer to it as a destination type area for the city council. And I'm not backing off of that, especially seeing some of Taff's designs, they're unique, they're creative and there's nothing like it in the area. And I'm going to turn the time over to him now, after his presentation, we'll open it up for questions or comments and please help me in welcoming Taff Deegan from Big T Recreation.
I don't think I've ever been clapped before. You know, this reminded me one time when this crowd, one time I was called in by a city to do exactly what we're doing here and such and to come and to meet with their parks committee, this group. And so I was about five minutes late to the appointment, I walked into city hall and such and I walked into the city council chambers and the place was completely packed with people. And I walked in and just being myself, walked in and said, "Hello, everybody, how are you? I'm sorry, I'm five minutes late, my name's Taff, I'm the playground guy, this is what I do. If you give me just a second, I'll set up my projector and such." The city manager came up and said, "This is the debate for the new city council member Jerb's supposed to be over there." And I walked into about an eight by eight room and that's where, that's where my presentation is supposed to be. So it was a pleasure to be with you today. Just to give you a little background about what our goals are here, about four months ago, this is when this project started, when I was contacted and asked if I could consult with the city on creating a unique playing environment. And it's something that we do day in and day out at Big T Recreation. And they provided me sort of a list of goals that they wanted to hope to accomplish in this playground. Keeping in mind that a playground is a very simple, but a very powerful thing as well too. It really has the ability to define and bring a community together in ways that are very uncommon and so it is, it's very powerful and very meaningful that way. And through working with the parks department, they came to us and they said, "First and foremost, we would like this to be a unique play environment." As Travis said, a destination, something that separates us, that makes it unique, a destination. Secondly, we like to make it safe, all right? We all want to make safe playground equipment. We all want to make safe playground equipment, of course, and really a top priority that way. We'd like to make it accessible as well too. We'd like to make it as accessible as possible, because that is so important for really a multi-generational park. We want to make it accessible for everyone. And then lastly, we need to make it very, very fun, of course. And I think we've accomplished that. Now, we've put some pictures up on the board, and I'm going to show some images up on the screen as well too. With that, none of this is finite, as far as nothing's been decided upon, you know, and we don't have an agenda as well too, in trying to push you and to get you to tell us that you would like one design over another. We're here simply on a fact-finding mission here. We'd like to get your feedback, your comments of things that you like and things that you don't like, and then we'll come back and we'll refine that as well too. So, fair enough. So, let's go to the, let's go to option number one here. Talk amongst yourselves for just a moment here. Okay, here we go. Okay, so our first design here, so one of the concepts that we came up in our first meeting was to do sort of a tribute, a military tribute, a patriot tribute, something that paid tribute to our armed forces. And with that as well too, was to do a fully ramped, if you just press on it again, it will go around, a fully ramped playground as well too, in meaning that you can go from the very start of the playground and work all the way through the playground in a mobility device as well too. So, from one end to the other end, completely ramped. It also is a good use of your space. Then we came up from there, and we came up and said, "What could we do to make this kind of unique for the area?" And so, we came up with a couple of themes that you'll see there. You'll see a plain tarmac runway, you'll see a jet that we've created within the playground, you'll see a Jeep as well too, and then you're going to see other little tributes to the branches of our armed forces as well. The playground was designed for, in the playground industry, we have two clarifications as for ages. We have the two-to-five age group and the five-to-12 age group. And this playground has unique elements for both of those. So, we really consider this a two-to-12 playground. Again, wanting it to be multi-generational and wanting it to accomplish as many users. Also, all of the playgrounds that I'm going to show you also fit within the same budget as well too. So, there's not a budgetary restraint here as far as, well, this one's less or this one's more. All of them are in the same category as far as budget goes. And as you look at this, and I know it's going, you know, fairly fast as such, you'll notice little things that we've done there, like the shade structures. Also, color. Keep in mind, color is not defined as well too. We can have to do any color. Someone, when we were doing the kind of the culinary before meeting, talked about hot slides, that they didn't want dark colors on the playground. Absolutely, that can be done. And actually, we picked different colors here just to separate them, so we can define them that way. So, that would be, that would be option number one. Option number two. So, option number two, we took the stance of saying, "Okay, let's not do any themeing. Let's take unique, creative playground equipment, but let's not define it as a certain theme. Let's not have it be a patriot playground, let's not have it be red, white, and blue", you know, which I think are all good things, by the way, but let's give a different option of playground equipment. This all fits within the same space as well too. This playground is ADA compliant, though it is not a ramped unit. So, we don't have ramps to go from one end to the other end. Though, we've covered all types of play. We've covered climbing, breakyating, balancing, agility, and so on and so forth, all those main things that we want to see within a playground, we've tried to encompass them here. Also, the uniqueness, you'll see different shapes and things. The goal is to get kids to move and play in unique and fun ways every time they come to the park. And also, as they come to the park to discover new things that they really, really love to do. So, this playground is very, very unique. So, we brought this back to the Parks and Recreation Department, and we get mixed reviews of, wow, we really like option one, but we really like option two as well too. There's sort of good things that are involved in both of those. And so, we came up with kind of a hybrid of those two for option three. So, in option three, we attempted to take all the things that we really liked in option one, but also take some of the themed elements that we liked in option one and include them onto the playground here. So, as this spins by, you'll see some of those keynote themed items, the runway, the jet, the Jeep and things that are also there. So, this becomes, you know, this unique playground. Has anybody seen a playground in Utah that incorporates a jet, a runway, or a Jeep? I have not either, and that was, and that was the goal as well too, and the direction from the Parks and Recreation Department. So, a lot of thought and consideration has been, has gone into different age groups and things. I assure you that as a playground designer and someone who does this for a living, that the age groups and everything, safety and compliance and all of those things have been considered in the playground. With that though, we didn't want to make it risk-free, of course. We wanted this to be somewhere exciting, you know, to be there. So, we've got some large neck climbers, we've got tall slides, we've got log walls as well too, together. So, just in general, what do you guys think? Did we do okay so far for some examples? How about just a hand for Travis for directing this sort of thing and keeping it. We'll open it up, I think, in just a moment. Let me give just a two-minute, a two-minute presentation on the splash pad as well too. Okay, there is a lot to consider when we start talking about splash pad, and a lot for the city to consider as well too. And the biggest thing is I'd like not to focus so much on the look of it, because we can change the look to be whatever you would like. But it's more a form of function, of how does it function within the city, how is it maintained within the city, is it sustainable, and so on and so forth. So, there's two types of splash pads that are available in the marketplace with regards to the operating system. There is a freshwater system, culinary system, and there is a full recirculated system that's there. Recirculated system, think of it very much like your swimming pool and such like that. There's pros and cons to each one of those that need to be discussed and reviewed to see if it could be something, again, can we build it, can we afford it, and can we maintain it that way? So, one of the directions that we came to, and working with the Parks and Recreation Department again, is to do a low-flow slash misting slash splash pad in a culinary system that way. So, we get the benefits of the fun, we get the benefits of the water and everything, but we're not using a lot of water that way. And as well, as it's something that can be maintained easily by the city as well too. Now, we are tapped on kind of space of what we're doing in the design as well too. That's not part of my scope. If you'd like a bigger splash pad, you should chat with Joe in here. My scope is to build it within the size that is there. But this splash pad is pretty unique, and that is, again, incorporating a lot of misting, a lot of splash, and also in a very, very sustainable, low-flow system that way as well. Travis, anything else you want me to add to that?
I agree.
Okay, very good. So, now, if it's possible, Travis and I would be welcome to take some questions, some comments and such, and/or we can stand next to the playgrounds if you'd like us to stand there and give us comments, however you'd like to proceed that way. I'll turn the time back over here to Travis.
That, that for the whole part completes our presentation tonight. And like I say, it was important for us to get back to you and explain where we're at and where we're going. It was important for us to show you some pretty awesome playground areas and things like that. And now, I'm going to turn the time over to you guys with questions you may have regarding playground and area. Sir, I got, I'm going to go with you right off the beginning.
Yeah, what are you choosing for playground? Can you make sure it's a grandparent accessible? Catch around with my grandkids?
Well, absolutely. Well, like Taff said, we take great pride in building playgrounds for all ability levels.
I'm just kidding really, but we had, we worked Riverdale Splash Pad a couple of weeks ago, and one of our grandchildren, we only have like 15 of them, so it's kind of hard to keep track of them. And one of them took off from the splash pad, ran up the hill to one of the three playgrounds they have there, we lost count of them, and so we got away. So, my base concern is security and, you know, and also shade area to sit around the splash pad on the grandkids are up there.
You know, and Taff has some shade structures in there. I mentioned a friend earlier, she has been out with me about the importance of putting in benches, about putting in areas for parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, to be able to sit comfortably and watch their kids play. So, we will definitely have benches, and we will definitely have shade areas. We're planning on planting a lot of trees in that area too, to help in that regard, but shade and comfort of all participants is very important to us.
Okay, I'm looking at this picture, and all this stuff is really dark. I take my granddaughter over to a park with dark stuff, and she burns it, it's burned. Then she comes over.
As Taff mentioned, colors, things like that are all subject to change. Angles of stuff, you know, so it's facing, maybe all the slides are facing east because more people play in the afternoon, or facing west because more people play in the evening. All things like that, we are completely open to in shifting and adjusting playgrounds and where they're at.
What are you guys using for ground material?
You know, that's a great question. We've talked about, we've talked about different things. You know, when this first started, I was pretty adamant about the rubber. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was pretty adamant about the rubber. I mentioned earlier that I have a two-year-old child, which the only reason I laugh about is because my daughter turns 25 next week. And I took him to a playground in Kansville, and they had that rubber area. And I noticed all these signs everywhere about make sure you're wearing shoes, the dangers of it, because it was frighteningly hot. I mean, frighteningly hot. I called my counterpart at Kansville and asked her about it. I said, "Hey, Chris, tell me what's happening here." And she said, "I don't know if I'd do it again. It's so hot, we're getting, we're not getting people to play on it, A, because of the heat on their feet, but more importantly, the fact that it's so hot, it makes the entire area hot." We're looking at, we've looked at obviously the engineered wood fiber, we've looked at that, we've looked at some other things. That is one area I'm not completely prepared to commit to that one yet, frankly speaking.
What's sand?
Sand, you know, sand...
Go heads and...
What's that?
Go heads and...
No, there won't be no sand. I can tell you, sand, sand I don't even believe is ADA compatible anymore. There's no scenario where it's sand, that I can assure you. That's the one I'm going to assure you of. I knew you had a question. Hold on, is it? Oh, thank you, sorry, sorry.
I have a couple of issues. I like the accessibility for handicapped children, but the thing that you don't take into account is those children who are full grown teenagers and adults that are developmentally delayed and want to play on playgrounds. And they're too short, they're dangerous for them because they're just too small. So, I would like to see those children taken into account too, because there's quite a few of them around the area. Also, lighting, I want to make sure we've taken into account all the houses that are around and budding up against this property now, unlike previously when the lighting was not right up against houses. And, I had one other thing, and the old playground equipment that was at, that is at North Park now, and at the school, why wasn't it considered to be incorporated into the design to save on plenty?
I'll answer the second part of the question. I know Taff took notes on the first part. Playground, and Taff's also certified playground inspector, are absolutely brutal to try to move. And I mean, from a liability perspective, putting them back into place, there's some that, you know, frankly speaking, and you know, that cut it out loose and things like that. It, if, on the first one, on the old one, North Park, there was enough issues there that it wasn't really feasible for us. What we did on that one, in full disclosure, was we put it up for sale. And we put it up for sale and on state government website, people who want to buy it, and were able to make money to help fund this park. You know, that's what we did with the old one at the old North Park Elementary. The new one, the new one, we're in the process of going to be moving it and probably use it for parks as much as anything. You know, I like that playground, it's a nice little playground. I love these playgrounds, they're big playgrounds, and, you know, I just thought that that would be something that would be really unique and awesome in this part of town, is to have something that big and impressive. So, that's to answer that question.
Lights?
Oh, lights, that's a great question. You know, we've got lights throughout the, throughout the parking lots and different areas like that. I'm going to be brutally honest with you, I have not even discussed lights in the playground area with Taff.
There's no lights?
We don't have any in the current plans, you know, for lights in there, it's something I can look into, but we don't have any lights in the playground area. The lights currently are mostly in parking, are in the parking lot areas, and, you know, we're optimistic that that's going to be bright enough to keep the park safe, but dim enough to not bother the residents.
What about drinking fountain?
You know, that's a great question, and honestly, it's one I'll wrestle with every year in the Parks Department, because, I'll tell you a quick story, I feel like I'm quite a storyteller to you. A year and a half ago, we had a drinking fountain that kept on getting broke, kept on getting broke, and we invested quite a bit of money in it, and right along and different, it got broke fairly quickly. We're going to have drinking fountains in the restroom areas, we're going to have drinking fountains over there, hook to those buildings. As far as right off, the proximity between those and the playground is very close, but right off the playground now, we don't have any plan for that, except for the restroom areas.
The softball fields, no?
We have no plan for that either. We do have them in the restroom areas.
So, I have a couple of suggestions. I really like option three. Could we do it with this one? My children love this one, and really long ones, and then for splash pad, so it's not going to look like that, it's, you can change it, and I know it's a small area, but that just looks boring.
What would you like to see here?
So, my kids love, have you been to the Leighton one? I know that's a big area, but they love the slide, and then they love that big bucket that falls down on them. Those are two options.
Thank you for all your hard work. My question is, option one seems to have more handicap accessible things. Could you please address specifically in each option what you would term handicap or wheelchair accessible on the play, on the options that you're showing? And then, I would like to make sure that from the playground to the splash pad, it is wheelchair accessible, that they can just roll through it. That's a, I think that's a really big thing. But to me, there's more options, there's more wheelchair accessible items for kids to play in option one than there is in option three. And as far as I know, there's only one other place in Logan that has a park where kids can go there in wheelchairs. And so, I'd like to move to an option that would deal with that.
So, great question by the way. And, you know, I think it would be good for us to get a consensus as well. And you know, I think it would be good for us to get a consensus as well too because it's a specific focus. If we want to do a complete wheelchair accessible playground, that needs to be a focus for us in the design. Because it doesn't really accomplish very much to have just a little bit of focus in it and not a lot. It's sort of all in, in that regard there. So, starting with option one, when we talk about an inclusive playground, really, children of all abilities like to do kind of the same thing, funny enough. They love to go down slides, they like to get around the playground. And that's probably the biggest thing, is they want to be able to access the playground. They want to be able to get up on the playground and they want to have same access as everyone else. So on option one, that is the focus here, along with the theme that we're doing. The focus was is to have a singular playground where you can start at grade level and maneuver all the way through the playground in a mobility device, up to the very top. There are some limitations in this as well too. There's limitations on how high we can get, how far we can stretch, and so on and so forth to keep that way. As far as the play value goes, once we do the accessibility standpoint, of being able to, how do we get everybody to every place and so on and so forth, then really the play value becomes very much the same as well too, of how a child will interact and play on the playground at different levels that way. When we jump into option two here, it's a change in focus. Again, we're up to hearing your feedback on that as well too. Everything that we're going to show you meets all current accessible guidelines, ADA guidelines and such. So there's transfer points, there's ways to do that, but it is not a ramped unit. That's the biggest change between them. Option one is a fully ramped unit that way. Option two is not. And so we get higher, we get higher off the ground because we're not having to ramp the unit that way. The accessibility is via a transfer point, which is, which meets code guideline, but it's definitely not the best. I won't advocate that it meets the needs whatsoever. It is there for what do, what do the codes require us to do. And those would be the same things that you would see in your elementary school playgrounds, all city park playgrounds that way. But then again, play value is the same. And that would go for option three as well too. Again, option one, focus is on accessibility. Option two and three, we're focused on tall, you know, some more height and things like that. So could we just get a general consensus here of focus? Do we want to focus on the accessible play? And could I just give my raise of hands maybe?
I have a question, sir.
What's that?
Why does it have to be one or the other? I'm a mother with special needs child and why does it have to be either children with special needs have accessibility or it's a part of playground for everybody else? Why can't it be a combination? Or you have an area that has some ramps so that those children can access the slides and things that normally they can't get to in a wheelchair? And then have the area with the tall things and all that stuff that are basically kids with special needs know they can't get to and maybe can't use, but have a combination of the two things so that everybody has something.
All right, and that's the exact feedback that we're looking for in the meeting. So thank you, thank you. It doesn't, and you are correct, it doesn't need to be left or right in that regard. But we do need to focus on it from a design standpoint. And so, while second yes, it can be, it can be both and no. Yes, please.
I mean, there's a way to say like, do we want option three to tweak it for special needs? I also have a special needs child, but I have one that's wrong. One likes to climb high and one doesn't.
You know, great comment on special needs from the audience. For sure Travis is writing that down. I think we would come up with both. So we got those noted, great comments.
Yeah, well done.
So just two thoughts, I guess, for thought my question. First one is on the splash pad, some feedback. I noticed that my two kids really, really enjoy the little coke stool and peeing water thing that just has a splash drop that fall out of it. They really quite enjoyed that of all the different toys. So just some feedback there. And then the other thing too is because there's so much feedback being given and clearly there won't be maybe one that rises above all the others today, is there going to be future discussions or future awareness made of some of the changes that will arise from this meeting?
There's no doubt we'll have to do a presentation upon taking input tonight to the city council. The city council will, they'll have to approve any sort of purchase we have. I would anticipate that conversation taking place in city council meetings. And they're the first and third Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM in the city building. We, I know we have to post it on our website. We'll have to announce what the topic of the conversation is for that. I, you know, we have to sit down, back down with Taff and go back into some of the design phase a little bit. So I can't tell you a firm date when that would be tonight, but through various forms of social media, our Facebook page and different things, we'll do our best to make sure you're all aware of it.
Yeah, I got, it's pretty much four different subjects. If we're looking for options, I'd pick option one or three just for the military and to honor George. He was a hospital corpsman. So maybe if he incorporated Jeep, put the insignia on there, hospital insignia on there. That would honor George there. Things to me that make a park, I want to go to a park where pavilions, benches, shade. You know, football fields and baseball diamonds, I stay away from. Now, my opinion on the splash pad, and this is just my opinion, is there's a splash pad that exists two miles away from here. We know that, we know that a splash pad is going to take away business from the pool. We raised our taxes to, because we couldn't afford to maintain the recreation center. So now we're going to add something else that's only going to be used four months of the year and we're going to have to pay for maintenance on it. So me, I would rather see more playground and not have splash pad. But that's my thing. The last thing is, can we consider putting cameras in various areas, the bathrooms, you know, because to reduce, well, to nail the people that's there.
We, you know, it's funny, recently this week I actually met with a guy who does security and talked about areas that we can put security cameras in this park. And I'll tell you the same thing I told him. My goal to put up security cameras isn't to catch anybody. It's the scary part of doing it. You know, and when we do it, we're going to advertise it and I don't know if we do one of them smiley on camera things or whatever it is that we do. There's certain places in, by the law, that you can and can't put those things up. And the gentleman I've been working with, he's fully aware of that and it is our plan right now to have camera system put in this park.
I really liked what you presented tonight. I can't wait to have a park again. And I'm hoping that it will encourage the people in the neighborhood to keep up their yards. As a grandmother, I like option three. But can I ask a question about the park in general? Is there any access to the library from the park down that street?
You know, off the trail, I wouldn't call it access, frankly speaking, because, or down that street, as far as the road goes, the park tomorrow goes, no. No, there is no access to the library.
But I can take a few steps across the rest.
There you go. I mean, where that walking trail is going to end, there will be some areas to get you to the backside of the library.
Don't put a park because all the, where it does attach now to the library and walking down it, the park's all over the track. So maybe some people can walk through.
Okay, okay. And I, and we can even talk to them about, in theory, we've had a pretty good partnership with this branch and the library as a whole about us maybe just pouring a piece of concrete, you know, that would just hook right into it. I can't promise that, but I can promise I'd have the conversation with the library about it. I can't imagine why they would be anti it, but I'll have that conversation.
Give it that definite stone.
So, I'm just getting here late, but on the splash pad, I know as a mom of little kids and other parents, we hate the idea. We absolutely hate the idea of a splash pad. It's, I don't think it's necessary, like we would rather spend, there's not a lot to do, especially as your kids get a little older and you have to make stages. A splash pad's too babyish for bigger kids. If you've got little ones, a pool's more accommodating. Plus, if you ask any resident that lives in Riverdale that deals with a splash pad, they hate it. It's like expensive to maintain. It also brings in a crowd of people that you don't necessarily want. Lots of parents drop off their kids and leave them unattended. And it just turns into this free-for-all group of unattended children. So I would rather, as a mom of little kids, spend the time on the playground equipment than on something that needs to be constantly maintained. And I know a lot of parents feel the same way. I just think it's unnecessary. I can turn on the hose in my yard if my kids want to splash around instead of a splash pad.
First of all, I'd just like to thank Travis Flynn. He personally returned a phone call. And so, Travis, thank you, appreciate that. I think splash pads are okay. I think it's great that you've decided that, maybe doing a smaller one. I think that they should be on a time. Are they going to be on a time limit of 10 o'clock at night, 9 o'clock at night? What's going to happen there?
You know, we haven't talked about fencing and dinner or anything like that, but there's no doubt Taff, correct me if I'm wrong, we can set timers for them that, you know, whether, if that's the route we end up going and say, hey, we're going to have it turned off every night at 9:00 PM. It can't turn on until 11:00 AM. I mean, we haven't set those parameters to, we can set the parameters to have it work or not work based on the time of day.
Wonderful. And then you were talking about the fields that will be in phase one. Will those be lit fields over there? Or will those games will just be for our little leagues?
Correct, correct. Our football slash soccer slash lacrosse area is not lit up. It is daytime, daytime access only. Little League football starts at 8:30 in the morning and the last game typically starts at 3:30 in the afternoon around Saturdays. So, but there are not, we're not.
And then the pickleball, same thing? There will be lighting on that or not?
You know, like I, like I mentioned when I was discussing the pickleball, that's still in kind of a conceptual phase. I, you know, truth be told, it's the first the city council had seen of it when I put it on the screen. And there's got to be some conversations, making sure that we can stay within budget, making sure that that's what they want to see and the community wants in that area. But truth be told, if we put them in, you know, we have lights that are always down at Emma Russell. You know, I know I'm not doing a great job of answering that question, but we have lights that are always down at Emma Russell. And it's a very similar system that, what's on the splash pad. There's only certain periods of the day that these lights can be turned on, you know, and no matter how many times you push the button or turn them on, if it's past 10:00 PM, they're not coming on. So, I mean, technology is great that way, that we can do those kind of things and make sure that it has minimal impact upon the people living in the neighborhood.
And my last question is, I noticed that today they finally came over in Logan. Can I ask why they, was it sprinkling? Was it water system or what? Why you let this part over here go to weeds? Because it's so high and it has been blowing?
I'm going to be brutally honest with you. I've made several mistakes on this job and that's probably the one I regret the most. A year and a half ago, we had a major sprinkling line issue, a main line issue in that section. And I'm just following on my sword right now on this one. And it broke and it was going to be a significant cost to fix. And we made a decision at that time with knowing we were going to build the park, not to do it. And I'll tell you right now, I was wrong. I should have done, I should have just said, let's get that area fixed, we'll keep that area green. I met with my Parks Department earlier this week and, you know, just kind of said to them, hey, I need by, you know, next week ideas that we can do something over there to make it at least through the construction phase better for the people and better for the residents. And I apologize, I dropped the ball now and I should have fixed the sprinkler line and spent the money at that time.
Good, I have a couple of follow-up questions over here. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken yet who would like to ask a question?
My question more on the city side. Do we have the resources to take care of something like this?
I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question?
Do we have the resources to take care of something like this?
You know, we've got parks department, they work extremely hard. I, you know, their efforts, I'm biased obviously, but they're as good as anybody in the cities. Anytime we add challenging maintenance areas, anytime that happens, there is the possibility of us coming to our city council and saying, hey, we might need a little bit more help. You know, and that help could come in the form of part-time money and it could come in the form of full-time money. You know, it's gotten hard, you know, in the Parks Department, with some of the beautification areas in some of our parks. And the one thing I will not apologize for the mistake, I mean, I will not apologize for how hard they work because I see it day in and day out. And, you know, I talk to them and, you know, they feel pretty good about some of the maintenance parts of the things here. We work hard and try to make a lot of this maintenance friendly. You know, some of the things that I didn't talk about yet, that I will. We tried doing some pre-planning in a lot of this. I mean, knowing that we're in a drought state and we designed a sprinkling system that if we do get to a drought, has the ability to water plenty fields. Because that's the areas you need to keep water because it's a liability issue if they're not safe. But maybe the rest of the park would die out a little bit. I'm talking in extreme drought type years. And we put in other variables there that we consulted with them all along. That being said, I know my Parks Department, they could use help. And they could use help right now. And we'll just have to see when this comes online if we're still in need of help or if we're good. But until it happens, I can't say 100%.
Travis, I think you did a great job. I was just wondering if the citizens on board have given us more resources to contribute to things like this, the roundabouts, the parks?
The city's been good, you know, I mean, the city council's been good in hearing our needs and requests for additional help and manpower. And as we go through this, the last thing in the world we want to do is invest the amount of money we're investing in this park and not have it be nice. That's, frankly speaking, not even an option. You know, it's got to be well-kept and it's got to be well-maintained. And I will accept that responsibility on behalf of this department. We kind of want to see some things before we commit to saying exactly what it is we're going to need from a manpower perspective. But I'm very confident that if the city council feels that that need is needed and that we need more people, I'm very confident in their ability to step up and play on that.
Travis, wasn't there some grant money that was allocated for that? And I heard there was some lighting?
We do have grant money that we've been able to get. Some of it's to help in bathroom, balcony, pavilion areas. We also got money for lighting, ball field lighting. And ramp is a great resource for us. It's something that we have a good relationship with them. It's helped us build the home center, it's helped us build our trail system. They've given us money for this park and we're going to keep asking for more. But I appreciate you pointing that out because ramp is a great partner and I do want to give them, I do want to give them a shout out for all that they do.
Hey, first I just want to say I'm anxious to see something happening in about 10 days over there. So, but as far as re-convening to go over the So, but as far as reasoning to go over the playground, can we have a drop dead date as to when this is going to be finalized, so it's not extended month after month back and month?
I think that's fair, and I, at the same time, like to ask Travis that question, is as we sit down and take what we've heard tonight, I, what would be your timeframe of being able to maybe have something there that we can show and explore?
So, the process for us, we'll maybe we'll take all of these comments back, and we will come up with a fourth option, which we were prepared to give, and maybe even a fifth option as well too. And so, we come back with two more options that are refined based on the communication and feedback that we received tonight. Though it is a design process, so we will bring things back, and we'll bring them to the parks department, get their feedback. They will come back and possibly have us do some more changes. So it depends just really on how quickly we can get a design done that we feel meets all of the feedback that we received here. So a typical design process and that moves sort of in two-week increments. So we would respond back in about two weeks' time with another set of drawings and plans and things for review. We'll get feedback and stuff, so I would say in roughly about a month's time, we could be back and ready for another show.
I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman, bringing up about the resources. And I would just like to make a comment and a concern of mine. There are parks that are charging AYSO for their kids to play on the city parks, and I hope that is not something that's going to be considered in Roy. These young people, the whole point of AYSO and the Little Leagues is to keep these kids off the street and give them some fun time in life. And I certainly hope that we will keep that in mind and not bring charges to those organizations. Thank you.
About renting parks, is that a possibility? We do a lot of park shows.
We have policies and abilities to rent out parks. There's aspects of parks that we've ran out, and there's other aspects we don't. We kind of like to be able to identify specific things like the east football field, you know. We do not ever reserve parking lots, we do not ever reserve restrooms, and we do not ever reserve playground areas. But in all of our parks, there's the ability to rent stuff out, absolutely.
So I got a question with that east football field. My husband on the backside of it, there used to be a drainage pipe that's now covered. Could you guys raise the ground there? Were you concerned about flooding there?
You know, when it first happened, there was a gentleman who lived over by you who came and visited us, and we...
Oh, my answer, neighbor.
Nice guy, he was a super-nice guy. And we immediately took those questions and concerns back to Wasatch Civil, who did some burp tests and things like that. As you guys well know, you live in a really sandy-type environment up here. It's better either than West Roy, and we have gumbo clay, so you guys win that fight. But we ran several tests, and we're not one bit concerned, frankly speaking. We may put in some French drainage systems, you know, that will just go down into a gravel box area.
Another big six, eight inch pipe on the backside of that fence.
No, and you're 100% right. I seen it on the plans, and it runs back down, and we may even look to see if we could use that. I know it's a dead, they refer to it as a dead man's pipe. It doesn't really lead to anything in particular, but we may tie in with that as well.
I was just wondering on the trail stuff, how long is the trail? I didn't see any of that stuff either. I guess I liked the track we had.
And I don't want to mislead you, I have no idea. You know, I can promise you, are you talking about the trail around the park?
I just don't...
This was a mile, a half. And what, here's what I'll do it to you to do. I'll commit to putting up signs that say, you know, every 1.3 lapses a mile or something like that. I can commit to that, but any number I told you tonight of how far it is would just not be true, frankly speaking. So I'll, I'll, no, we have, yeah, there's already wills, and we'll go out and injure it and see what it is, so I can give you a better answer on that. But I will, I promise, I'll, we'll track that down, and we'll hang up some signs that say what a distance is for a mile.
Okay, Travis, one last question. He's been waiting very patiently. We'll start wrapping this up here.
I just want to say, option three, so if I'm voting, I want to vote three. And I have to tell you that my kids are really excited about splash pad. So, I know there's a couple people don't like them, but my kids are pretty excited to be able to walk to the splash pad, so.
There you go. They're about four splash pads. Hey Travis, maybe this is fair for option four, five, or six, however the options we want to go. As we wrap this up for a lot of good comments, splash pad, who is in favor of a splash pad? Please raise your hand high. So let's have on one of those options, a splash pad option, okay? Because there's, I think the majority...
And we have the water system, and I think it's more so playing around with some of the impact in some of the conversations we've heard here, incorporating that in this design.
Can we ask you opposed to the splash pad since we asked you as a favor?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's more than fair.
Who's opposed to the splash pad?
Okay, we'll have some options at council meeting, and we'll make sure everybody knows here when that discussion's going to be, once we get option four, five, or six back. And then what about maybe as we wrap up, option one? Who likes option one? If you, option two? Option three? Okay, that's the majority. So maybe something good to have to look at with the handicap accessibility with option three and splash pad.
I have to ask one more question. If you know my mother, she's determined to ask me to ask it, and if I don't ask it, I have to go.
Okay, you're up.
So, her concern is now that the park was up against her property, what kind of maintenance is going to occur right along the fence line with all these cars?
And that's a great question. We try to be good neighbors with all of our people, all the residents up at the property line. Currently, our current schedule is, and I don't see this changing in the near future, we're at every park in Roy City at least once a week. You know, that's what makes the park department, you call me up on Wednesday at 10:30 and I say we're at West Park, Tuesday at 1:15 I'll say we're at North Park. And where I'm going with that is, is we will spend at least a day in almost every park in Roy. We'll go along the fence line, we'll edge along the fence line, we'll weed along the fence line, things that we do along with all of our other parks. The last thing we want is any resident to feel like we're not being good neighbors. And if we're missing any of your concerns, please don't hesitate to give us a call.
And real quick too, before I ask, get the last question, I agree with this lady over here that says she wants to see something happen. I think I do too. I know Travis does, I know the mayor and the council does. So I want to put the pressure on you, as soon as we get it, let's get it going, because I'm excited for it. I think it's going to be super good, and I know you guys are all ready to see it happen. So let's make it happen. One last question right there.
You were mentioning fence line not being loaded. Can we get that loaded? I got my port route lead out, so I'm trying my best.
Yeah, tomorrow's not a great day because we're at the very end of our summer schedule, and my guys leave frankly speaking in a pretty early, Monday's a holiday. I'll get some guys out there next week, you know, with mowers, weed eaters, and some things like that to clean that area up off there.
Hey, super good town hall meeting. We got a lot of good input from you. We'll take it back to the table, design a couple other options, and be good to go. Okay? Do we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you all for coming, super good input.